Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, invited guests, and visitors. Also, I want to welcome my colleagues here on city council to our public work session. I would ask at this time if you would please note your presence electronically.
Six members of the city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dr. Patton, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. As you are all aware, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail has ceased operations and the city...
Do I need to start again?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. As you are all aware, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail has ceased operations and the city has been working with its fellow HRRJ authority members to purchase the jail facility with the intention of using it as our Portsmouth City Jail. The acquisition of a more modern jail facility away from the waterfront allows the city to address several priorities, including the safe detention of juveniles in the Portsmouth and redevelopment of the Portsmouth waterfront. The Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority was founded by the cities of Portsmouth, Hampton, Newport News, and Norfolk in 1994, and opened in 1997. The city of Chesapeake joined in 2014. After years of staffing shortages, the authority decided to close the facility as of April 1, 2024. Still, we would be remiss to not recognize the tireless professional work that the jail staff provided to care for persons incarcerated at the jail, and we wish those who work there much success as they transition to new employment or retirement. With that said, a vacant jail facility within the city of Portsmouth has more than enough capacity to house the city's incarcerated population, and it is immense opportunity for the city. It may allow us to bring our juveniles back to the city where they can be closer to their families and to redevelop the waterfront to bring more downtown development and bring new city amenities to the seawall. Getting to the point has taken thousands of hours of effort from city employees across several departments. The Portsmouth Sheriff's Office, staff from other localities, regional jail staff, and the Commonwealth are all capable and consulted with us as partners. Who you will hear from tonight, it is due to their collaborative effort that the city can reimagine the city jail facility and its waterfront, which has always been culturally and economically significant to its future. This evening, Mr. David Hackworth of Mosley Architects will present to you information on the usage of the facility as a city jail. After his presentation, Mr. David Rose and Mr. Kyle Lux of Davenport and Company will present the city's financial ability to take on new debt. Mr. Hackworth.
May I think I had... Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city staff, it is a pleasure to be here again. My name is David Hackworth. I'm a vice president and the director of justice planning and development for Mosley Architects. We were brought in by the city of Portsmouth last year to do what's called a community-based corrections plan, and this is a process that is established by the Commonwealth of Virginia to go through the Virginia Board of Local and Regional Jails. Basically, anytime you're looking at any type of renovation, construction, purchasing that goes through, that's over a $5 million price tag, you're going to go through a process called the Community-Based Corrections Plan. So I'll give you a brief overview of that, then talk a little bit about the regional jail, what would come next, and then the proposed schedule that was put into that community-based corrections plan. So there are two parts that are put together to make the Community-Based Corrections Plan. The first part is called the Needs Assessment. The Needs Assessment is an analysis of the criminal justice and inmate population data in the city of Portsmouth. We get that from a number of data sources, the Virginia State Police, the Virginia Compensation Board, LID's information. We get it from... We go out and we talk to the criminal justice practitioners, we talk to the judges, we talked to the magistrate's office, we talked with the sheriff's office. We also did a jail forecast, and based on all that information, we then come up with what the proposed project will be. That proposed project then focused on the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. So from that Needs Assessment, we then went to the planning study, which was to look at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. There we gave details. The focus was to look at it, to look at the systems that were currently there, what we could do to upgrade them, to make them like new again, as well as any modifications that might need to be made for the sheriff's office. So we also sat down with the sheriff's office and looked at any potential modifications. With that, the code also requires some site plans elevations which to an existing facility are already there. The unique part of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail is we went back and looked over the past 30 years, and we've never seen a jail take over another jail in this capacity. And so it is already an approved jail through the Board of Local and Regional Jails. Talking to them initially, you know, this is something that already could be moved into and could be used as a jail. So it's very unique. When we did the planning study, of course, you've got the site plan of the regional jail, and then, of course, the jail itself is at the 2690 Elmhurst Lane. It's about 370,000 square feet total facility, and it sits on about 38 acres off Elmhurst Lane. So that was submitted up to the Virginia Board of Local and Regional Jails. It had a deadline of December 31st, which Mosley presented up to them prior to the December 31st deadline. The next thing that will be needed will be some action from council. It is a resolution that will have to come from council, basically asking the Board of Local and Regional Jails to approve that Community-Based Corrections Plan, and would also ask for them to approve 25% eligible reimbursement of any cost. This is just a sample of what that might look like. That has to be done prior to going to the board for an official vote. As of now, that vote would occur May 15th up in Richmond at the next official board The schedule that we have presented to them, and of course, this can slide, it can modify, this is just kind of what we put in as a placeholder. Of course, we submitted the planning study December of last year. You'll see that the approval for the Local and Regional Jail Board, we're looking at May of 2024. Legislative approval of the project, the reason why you see that in April of '25 is because that then has to go through the process, has to be put into the governor's budget, and actually has to be approved by the General Assembly, which won't occur until 2025. We did put in some design, if we were looking to go ahead and to move forward with doing some of the modifications and doing some of the upgrades, that would be planned for that facility this year, and then with the potential of actually moving individuals in as the Portsmouth City Jail January of 2025. And again, this is just a proposed schedule, this is not a steadfast schedule, it can be moved around quite a bit. Questions? I know that's quick. I will tell you, you know, as far as everything else that has gone through the Needs Assessment has to go through the Criminal Justice Board, that was actually done, was approved by them back in December. That's a step. So we have done everything that's necessary up to this point except for the resolution and actually getting the vote from the Board of Local and Regional Jails for their actual
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for my colleagues on council regarding the presentation? You're not showing up here, sir, so I didn't know if you pushed the button or not. Okay, well, nobody's showing up? Okay, is that how it's showing up now? Because it normally shows up on this schedule. Okay, no worries. I just, I don't see it on the screens. Dr. Whitaker, go ahead. You have the floor.
Yes, is it Mr. Hackworth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, on the proposed schedule, just curious, you mentioned the legislative approval is April 2025, and you have the start date as January 2025, so is that legislative approval that has no impact on when?
So what, the way this would generally work is that based on the board's approval, it then would go to the general services, construction management for any modifications, upgrades that were going to be made. They do some value engineering. It then goes to planning and budget to be included into the governor's budget in December of this year, and then it would go to the General Assembly, of course, for them to consider next year. This is a reimbursement, so it's not funds upfront. So there is the gamble of actually performing work prior to the actual approval of that reimbursement. And that's why I said, you know, as far as the notice to proceed and when you move people in could be slid on with where you go. We just anticipated the approval of April 25 because you never know how the General Assembly is going to, you know, we're still dealing with the budget now for this upcoming year in the state. So that's just a guess of when it might be approved.
So that has no impact on the start occupying facility that you have for January?
That would be strictly up to the city of Portsmouth.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hackworth. Thank you for the presentation. My question was along the occupancy as well, but more related to our juvenile detention. I know that you know what our situation is here in Portsmouth, and we had hoped that there may be some build-out for us to be able to provide an opportunity for our juvenile detention program housing.
So the unique process of juveniles is we're actually talking about two different governing agencies within the Commonwealth of Virginia. You're talking the Virginia Board of Local and Regional Jails overseeing the adult jail, regional jails, local jails that sheriffs run, and then the juvenile detention centers are overseen by the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice and the Board of Juvenile Justice. They have a very similar type process with the Needs Assessment, planning study type thing. They do have a little bit of different requirements within their construction. However, to say that it's impossible, I would not say that. To say that it would absolutely work, there would probably have to be modifications, but there is a process to go through that, and there are facilities that we do have now that actually are kind of shared facilities. Piedmont Regional Jail, there's two separate facilities. There's a juvenile and the actual regional jail, some of the services the jail provides, and that, the linens, the clothing are transported over, and then we actually have a jail that's actually connected to a detention home, and they're separated, and so a lot of the services are done. But there's a very distinct line between where the adult population goes, where the juvenile population goes, and they are not the same staff. So you won't find the sheriff's office running a juvenile detention center. Generally, they're going to fall under city staff or some other jurisdiction, you know, some other agency. But it is possible.
It's possible, and hopefully concurrently with those assessments plans running together so that the time ends up being close to the same time.
And I would say, we haven't looked at the juvenile to be brought into that, but we could potentially do that.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hackworth, for your presentation. My question is along the lines, do we know of any requested alterations or mandated changes in the structure? We know about the juvenile piece of it, and along with that, have there been any cost assessments?
So as far as the actual modifications that we have looked at within the facility, I will tell you, we actually sat down with the sheriff's office. The modifications that we have proposed actually divide up some of the housing units to split them up because of custody levels that you have within the facility, your maximum, your medium, your minimum security inmates. And then we have also looked at the potential, we've talked with the magistrate's office as well as the courts. The facility right now does have what we call a video arraignment room, a room where they can sit down and they can video with the magistrate's office, or they could video with the general district, juvenile court, circuit court. They wanted some more capacity, so we actually designed and converted some spaces to make additional rooms to allow the courts some more flexibility. And then likewise, because of the arrest process, we also did some modifications for a magistrate's area, where the officer, if they could go to the current one and bring them to the jail, they can do that. If they needed to bring them straight to the jail, the magistrate could be in person, the magistrate could do video, so we've made some modifications there. But those were the modifications that we have actually done to the, or that have been proposed within the facility itself, and that was just based on the actual needs of Portsmouth and the practitioners that are here within the city and their request.
And I take it that we'll see what the cost of those modifications will be shortly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I saw Trey stand up. I think he wanted to say something. Okay, that's what I wanted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, Councilman Hugo, I think he had one more question for you, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So in your response to Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody has shared a bunch of things that are being built into the plan. How many of those things have to be done before we can start using the jail as a jail? I mean, to your earlier point, on the 29th of March, it was a jail. So I guess my concern is buildings don't like to be empty. They start to fall apart pretty quickly. So it seems to me the sooner that we can move into the jail and start using the jail as our jail like it was being used as the regional jail, the better off we'll be in terms of not watching the building degrade while we go through this proposed schedule that looks like it's pretty fluid to me. So it seems like we need a plan that actually maps out, these are the things that have to be done before we can move in, and then these are the things that can be done concurrently after we move in without... I mean, it's a great big jail, we got plenty of room there. Seems like we could be using one wing while we're modifying and fixing the other wing. We can be using all of that while we modify another wing for the juvenile problem. So I think I'm, I guess I'm confused by the proposed schedule that drags out until next year when it seems like, why don't we pick up and move as soon as the sheriff is ready?
So I know as far as the housing units themselves and what we focused on with the housing units. So when you look at this, the rated capacity is about 790-some bits. You're going to focus on one particular housing unit, which actually fit right in with what the forecast was. And so when we sat down with the colonel, we talked with the sheriff, you know, with the focus of where the breakups would be, the unique thing, and I guess this is where a lot of people don't think, is the different custody levels. Not only are you housing women and you're housing men, you're also housing maximum security, medium security, minimum security, right? And so the more housing units you have, the more spread out you have, of course, the more staff you need. So that would be a question for the sheriff as far as the, you know, the staffing of a facility during this, when this is going on with the other housing units. For the one that they identified, we actually were looking at taking a housing unit... So the easiest way to describe this is there are three housing units at Hampton, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Housing unit one has four pods, two down low, two up on the third and fourth. Housing unit two, housing unit three are bigger, there are six pods each, three on the first and second floor, three on the third and fourth floor. Housing unit two was identified as the most advantageous for the sheriff's department to use. When you go to the individual pods, now the pods can be divided, either they can be one big pod, they could be divided in half, or they could be divided in threes. If they're divided in threes, the structure of the control rooms are much different than a full pod or a pod divided in half. So when we looked at the one that they were focusing on, the big pods and dividing them in half was really the construction of a CMU wall. That's the biggest construction. It's not, we don't believe that it's going to be a very complicated process to do because it doesn't change the structure of your control room for that individual pod. So I think as far as that goes, that allows them some additional breakup for custody levels and for the different, you know, the male and female population. As far as could it be utilized, and could you move, and could you shift, and could you do things like that, then I think that comes down between, you know, the sheriff and how he thinks he can transition into the facility itself. And then likewise, you know, the other one, the magistrate would be a process, you know, between the police department and, you know, what does that process look like now? You know, I know now at the current police department, the magistrate is located there. There are times when, you know, they do go to the city jail and they do some work, and there's times when they video there. I know that the video arraignment is highly used by the courts. That was stressed to me by the juvenile court, by the circuit court, by the general district, and of course, you know, when circuit court gets on, you know, the higher court usually beats out the lower court. So they really did push for those additional spaces. But I think ultimately, when it comes down to transitioning and what that schedule looks like, you know, I think once this goes through, that's really, you know, between what the sheriff really feels he can do and how he can transition in. So I think that would be a possibility.
So I'm trying to figure out what your role in all of this is. Are you the person that's going to put this plan together, or is the sheriff the person that's going to put the plan together, and then you're going to get the right state agencies involved at the right time?
So we are the ones that came in for this Community-Based Corrections Plan. We are the ones that sat down and said, here's where all your information is, this is what the data says, this was the condition of the facility, this, these are, you know, how do you want to move forward? This is how we're viewing the planning study, this is what needs to be done. We came in, we did the evaluations of electrical systems, of mechanical systems, of plumbing. These are the issues that need to be looked at, you know, your fire alarm panels, what needs to be done with those. We sat down with the sheriff's office and said, you know, is this going to work for you? How is this going to, you know, how are you going, are you going to be able to house with this? What modifications would you need? And so from that, we put this plan together, we're the ones that are going to run it through, and then potentially, we could be the firm that actually comes in and provides the construction documents, but we're not there yet. What our role is right now, I think, is to get this through the Community-Based Corrections Plan and get this approved with the Virginia Board of Local and Regional Jails.
All right, well, let me give you for instance. For instance, the last time we talked about the juvenile problem, the sheriff said that if he had the right facility in the current jail, he could house youths overnight to keep from running back and forth across the state between the time that they're arrested and the time that they're arraigned. So the conclusion that we reached was, but the current jail needs a whole bunch of work done in order to be able to do that. So hopefully, the sheriff has told you guys, an important aspect of taking over this new jail is we need some space set aside to house youths overnight to preclude all this travel while we go figure out what the long-term solution for juvenile detention is. Was that built into the discussion?
It was not, because our focus, actually, we were brought in last year, before all this kind of came through, and this was information that we were, you know, we were sitting in in September and October to move forward and to go in. And again, we're talking about two different agencies. We're talking about this process for this Community-Based Corrections Plan versus this process for the Department of Juvenile Justice. So we have not at this particular time, no, sir.
Okay, then it sounds like we have assembled a plan based on outdated information.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. So with the timing of everything that happened, we had started to work on this plan. It started out with the city basically purchasing a wing of the jail and using that as our city jail. Whenever it seemed like there was not going to be any other tenants at the jail, we became the sole person. We have had discussions with juvenile justice. We are exploring all of our options as to what we can and cannot do as far as housing juvenile offenders at the regional jail. This in particular, so one of the things of kind of conceptually is that Mosley is to help represent the city, work on the facility. The sheriff, he has a separate set of duties at the city. Our role is to provide the, kind of the administrative functions, you know, allow for him to have that, and then also to provide a facility. We are working on the facility. Now, as far as the specifics of what the jail needs to be and what it needs to look like to house juvenile offenders, we are working through that. We are not necessarily at this time proposing to make giant changes to the regional jail to preclude our ability to house juvenile offenders. Whenever we have a specific opportunity, a specific plan to do that, if we need to do that, we will come back to you with that specific set of plans. This here is our opportunity to purchase a facility that we believe has the ability, and we expect, and we have every expectation that it would have the ability to house juveniles with minimal or no changes to the physical structure of the building, at least in the near term. But at this time, no, we did not necessarily take into account juveniles, however, we do not think anything that is happening would preclude us from housing juveniles. That's based on conversations with the state.
Okay, and so who owns putting that plan together to deal with the youth, with the juvenile detention?
The city would.
The city would. Who in the city? City manager, but who in the city owns that plan? Where are we at in building that plan?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, as Mr. Burke has indicated, the
first phase, as Mr. Hackworth has presented, is first for the administration of securing the jail and what the needs are and what the capabilities and the condition as you reported. The additional piece that, as Mr. Burke said, we are beginning now to talk about, because when Mr. Hackworth started December of last year, as you indicated, the discussion of having a pod available for a juvenile detention or juvenile housing had not been discussed. We're now just at that phase of which securing the jail or the capabilities of the jail and the discussions with the sheriff at the appropriate time of their four parts, is there a part that could be considered for juvenile housing? We're not there to make plans or to discuss yet. We're now talking about securing, the process for securing, the regional jail that is available in our city. But that part that you are talking about will be coming forward as the sheriff decides or determines he's got the jail, and now we can house our inmates, and there may be a possibility, or there is a possibility of a pod for the juveniles. That's where we are right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, to follow up on my colleague, correct me if I'm not correct, a month ago, or maybe a little over a month ago, we had a judge, Judge Griffin came to the chamber, and there was a sense of extreme urgency to find housing for juveniles to the point that we were talking about modifications of the existing jail cellar to accommodate juveniles for a short period of time. So I guess my question is to someone, does this still have a sense of urgency? I took it that it has an extreme sense of urgency, but I'm not, I'm not getting that feeling, if you may, as I sit here right now. I don't get that sense of urgency.
Yes, sir. So I would detach what we're talking about here with the purchase of the regional jail... So I would detach what we're talking about here with the purchase of the regional jail from the near-term housing of our juveniles. Whatever we need to do to house the juveniles, the city is working on. City engineer will be back with you at some point in the near term to discuss that. This here is the acquisition of a facility that we believe could be a long-term solution.
Right. Mr. Burke, and based on what, what we've discussed at this point, I think that's a prudent recommendation at this time. I think what we've heard is the, the item and the concern before us is how we move forward with securing the jail and making that, working with the sheriff and making that available. So with that, I, I'd like to thank both of you for coming up and sharing that information.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to ask Mr. David Rose and Mr. Kyle Lux from Davenport and Company to come forward and talk about the city's financial ability to take on new debt.
Good evening, Mr. Rose, Mr. Lux. Good to see you gentlemen.
Good to see you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, David Rose from Davenport. We have a presentation this evening that I'm hopeful will give you some confidence that the investments that you are looking at that include the purchase of the, of the jail and some of the renovations for this to move into are very much affordable and are prudent financially and will not block out some of the other needs that you have in your overall CIP, capital improvement program. So I'm going to ask my colleague Kyle Laux to walk you through this and we'll be happy to answer any questions or get any information if we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Kyle Laux with Davenport. So the presentation up on the screen, we'll walk through and happy to answer your questions as we go. But I think to begin in terms of background, again, our role and our job here is to provide some of that outside independent assessment and guidance in terms of your ability to take on a project like this in the context of best practices, your policies, your budget, et cetera. So that's really what we'll talk about on the back half of the presentation. To begin the presentation, we'll give you just a little bit of background to help understand why we make those statements in terms of your ability to do this jail is indeed affordable and within best practices. So on page three, in terms of the goals and objectives, we'll start and we'll talk about the city's credit ratings. So the city has three very strong credit ratings. Those have been stable for a number of years. We'll address the underlying factors to come up with those, and those will play an important factor as we talk about how we go out and obtain the financing for the jail here in the near term. The second, we'll talk a little bit about the historical performance, just in, in broad brush to give you some of that perspective of where you've been about the last five years. It's positive, and so that plays into the overall sense that indeed you can take on a project like this. Number three, we'll look at the existing tax-supported debt profile. As David mentioned, part of what we look at is not just this project, meaning the jail project, but how does that fit into the overall debt profile? And what we'll see is we have the ability to take that on and, as David mentioned, not crowd out other needs in terms of taking on CIP projects. And then lastly, we'll get to a time schedule and the actual impact of the jail itself. On page four, in terms of the credit ratings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, you may recall this from prior presentations and discussions, the city has three outstanding credit ratings from all of the three major credit rating agencies. They all up there on the screen, Moody's at a double A two, S and P at a double A, and Fitch at a double A. So they're all consistent across their rating spectrum. You can see using their terms, they're very strong credit ratings, and so that's important. That's informing how we think about going out and obtaining the financing and informing, again, how you think about your overall finances. On page five, as we think again about those credit ratings and looking at what really matters when the rating agencies are coming up with those credit ratings, I'll point your eye to the bottom of the page here. It really can be summarized in four major factors. You have the economy, that factor that's least within your day-to-day control, but it's very important. Number two is the finances and the fund balances, and so that's one we'll talk a little bit more about in terms of our ability to generate annual surpluses and maintain very strong fund balances. That is a critical underpinning of our credit ratings. The third factor there is debt and long-term liabilities, and so we'll talk about how we look relative to our policies. That's one of the ways we measure that. And then number four, management and institutional framework, really how do we run our city from both a financial perspective and otherwise? And so we'll talk about those various factors. On page six, we've just summarized, we know we have three credit ratings, but one of the nice things the rating agencies have done in recent years, they've given us these nice kind of bullet point summaries in their full public report in terms of things that could lead to both upgrades and downgrades in terms of credit rating. And so we just thought we would review a couple of those with you. Top of the page, factors that could lead to an upgrade of the credit rating in the context of a variety of different factors. They talk about decreased debt burden and associated fixed costs. So we give you a little perspective on how you are stronger today than you were five years ago, so it's a positive. Number two, which we keep a very close eye on, is the continued ability to maintain our pension funding program. We've got a little bit of a nod in here, we watched that, not necessarily tied directly to the jail financing specifically, but it's a big piece of your overall financial profile. And then the last two there in terms of the tax base, the ability to grow that tax base through either economic development or just natural growth of the tax base. And then lastly there, sustained improvement in financial performance. So what really are, as we'll see in the next couple of pages, we're checking a variety of those boxes. That's a positive. Doesn't mean it's all positive per se, but we feel good about where we are situated with those. Bottom of the page, in terms of things that could go the other way in terms of a downgrade, important to mention this during the budget cycle, number one is a reduction in the reserve and liquidity levels. We've talked about that frequently, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, just how important that fund balance is in maintaining a very strong fund balance for Portsmouth. That has helped to counterbalance some of our other challenges, and so we just want to make sure that we stress that. And the last two there in terms of increasing fixed cost and debt burden, tax base contraction, obviously watching those to the extent they occur. So page number seven, how have we as a city been operating financially? We've pulled these numbers straight from your audit and just summarized them, and what it shows at the bottom of the page is that each year from 2018 through 2022, you've generated in the general fund a surplus. So we bring in more revenues than we have expenditures in the general fund. That is a positive thing. That'll be a positive message to show to the rating agencies. It's helped build your reserves, and that again is a strength. We understand the 23 audit, while it's not yet completed, is in process. We understand that's going to be another positive result preliminarily. So just adding to that trend in terms of the good cash flows in the general fund. That segues over to page eight. In terms of that fund balance, we mentioned just how important that is to the rating agencies, to outside lenders, to understand that the city has that financial flexibility, has that wherewithal to take on something like this jail project along with the rest of its CIP. You can see at the bottom of the page, we've called there that available fund balance, it's grown the last five years, that's important. You've had good years financially. On the right-hand side, you see that available fund balance versus revenues. So that's our policy whereby we want to be as a city above that red line. If you see that bottom right graph, we are above that red line. It's important to be above that red line, knowing that we as a city have a number of challenges and some uncertain economic future just nationally. And so that's a good position, positions us well to be talking to the agencies here in the next 30 to 60 days. Yeah, it's a great point. And so one of the reasons amongst the variety of reasons that fund balance is so important is interest rates have evolved over about the last two years. Those dollars in the fund balance are generating real interest earnings for the city. That hasn't been the case previously just because of natural interest rates, but the way that market rates have moved in about the last two years or thereabouts, that generates very substantial dollars that flows right into the general fund, helps take pressure off of some of the other operating costs, takes some pressure off of the tax burden of the city. So with that, we'll shift gears, talk a little bit about our tax-supported debt profile. So this is just on the general fund side of things. Again, if you were to compare this relative to five years ago, we are stronger in this regard. Importantly, what you see on the page there is that debt profile, the outstanding debt, has a natural decline to it. So as we think about incorporating this jail project, the potential need for future projects, we have a natural decline that'll happen over the next five to seven years that helps to be able to incorporate new debt service without a big impact to the budget. It also means that we're not passing the debt on to future generations. The debt is repaid in a rapid fashion, and so that again is a positive as we think about the CIP and this jail project. One other factor in terms of our debt profile that is unique to Portsmouth is we do have our pension bonds that have been outstanding for about 11 years or thereabouts. They're paid off annually in fixed installments. Those dollars obviously have gone right into the pensions to help shore up those pension funding levels, and so that is an important factor in terms of stabilizing the finances going back 10-plus years ago. And so we watch that, we're getting closer to the time period when those get paid off, but it's still about 12 years out, so it factors into the overall picture. We would note there in the green box, the city a number of years ago did refinance those for substantial savings, saved about $9 million that also went into those pensions, again, to help shore up and strengthen the pension funding levels. And so an important piece of how we think about the overall finances going forward. So with that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we'll talk a little bit about this jail financing and what has been assumed and proposed in terms of the plan here. We've been running and been given about $45 million. That would be sufficient to both purchase the jail and do some initial needed renovations to that facility. That's what we've understood and, and been given. And so that $45 million, typical of most of our city financings for capital projects, be repaid over about a 20-year time period, so we're helping to spread sort of that generational equity over the life of the loan, and we'll see what that looks like in terms of our debt ratios the next couple of pages. Importantly, when we've done this planning, we've assumed a 5% borrowing rate. Current market rates are substantially below that, probably in the 4% range, plus or minus, so we've tried to build in some contingency there. We don't control that, you don't control that as a city. We like to err on the more conservative side, but we do at the moment have some contingency built in. That is echoed here on page 12. Page 12 just gives you a sense of where current market rates are. I think as you've maybe paid attention to this over the last four or five years, we had those really all-time lows during the pandemic. Rates have moved back up from there, but if you look at that left-hand graph, that's looking over a long, roughly 40-year history, you can see that where we are right now is historically very, very favorable relative to that history. So are we lower than the all-time lows? We are, but we're still very much in a favorable position to be borrowing for roughly 20 years. Page 13, taking a look at a couple of our critical debt policies. The city has a variety of policies. We want to focus on those that are specific to the debt profile and give you that sense. Again, getting back to the rating agencies and being able to demonstrate that we are as a city in good financial shape and we can take on a project like this and maintain our financial wherewithal. So what this is showing us is our debt service versus budget policy. So in essence, how many pennies out of every dollar in the debt, in the budget, excuse me, are going to make a debt service payment? We as a city have a policy that says no more than 10% or 10 pennies out of each dollar in the budget should go to make a debt service payment. What you can see is that putting the pension bonds to the side for the second, that's kind of that light green color, we are fairly substantially below that policy. And so we've got the capacity, which is represented in that kind of light colored, light yellow color on the graph there. That light yellow is the debt service on the 45 million for the jail. And so what you see, you layer that in over a number of years, we're looking at about 10 years, things will change, but what we would be able to demonstrate to the rating agencies, to the credit markets, is that we can take on that 45 million and the associated payments and maintain compliance with that policy. The other point we'll note here is if you look back about five years ago, mentioned this in the front end, we are in much stronger shape relative to that policy than we were five years ago. So the city has been paying off its debt responsibly, positions you to be taking on a project like this and remain within your policy. Page 14, our other important debt policy, this one's called debt to assessed value. You'll see a similar graph there on the right-hand side of the page whereby we as a city have a policy that says we don't want this particular ratio to be above 4%. That's what that red line is there. And similar analysis here, we've taken the projected debt on that roughly $45 million, layered that in, that's the bright yellow color, and you're able to demonstrate to the agencies and the markets that even with doing that, you're still in compliance with that policy and in compliance with best practices. So lastly, a couple concluding observations, top of the page here, the city, as we say there, currently maintains a very strong reserve position, just make sure we echo that. It is budget season, budget cycle, part of what we need to demonstrate to the outside entities is that we're going to maintain those strong fund balances. We think the 2023 numbers will help to support that when indeed we see those. You've had some growth in the budget and the tax base that has made our debt ratios stronger than they were five years ago, so we just point that out. Want to make sure that during this budgetary cycle, maintaining a structurally balanced budget whereby we can demonstrate that a recurring revenues covering recurring expenditures, that'll be another important piece of the message to the agencies. And so that gets us really to number four here, which is as we take all those components together, we can take on this $45 million within policies, taking into account the budget cycle, et cetera, et cetera. We've got an important red note there that says the time schedule we'll talk about on the next page is dependent upon getting our 2023 audit, I say ours as a city, complete. We understand that's very much in process, and so I know we're expecting that here within maybe about the next 30 days. That'll keep us on cycle with the time schedule we'll talk about on the next page. That gets us to our time schedule on page 16. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, with your approval of moving forward with the overall plan, what we would do on the financial side is working with your staff, working with your bond counsel, McGuire Woods, et cetera, is come back May 14th and ask you to take some actions specific to borrowing the $45 million. If we need to move that a little bit, we can, but that's what we've targeted for the moment. So in about a month or thereabouts, we'd be back with those actions. Later in May, probably the week of May 20th, we'd be briefing the rating agencies and the overall plan and the city's finances, which would really get us into the June timeframe to actually borrow the money, lock in the interest rates, and have funds in hand. So the entire goal is to move this through during the balance of this fiscal year such that funds are in hand so you can secure the jail facility and put some of those improvements in that the city has identified. So with that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, sir. And before we go to my colleagues for questions, Dr. Patton, ma'am, you have the floor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, just to share some closings before Mr. Lux leaves, that over the coming months, staff, staff will bring updates on progress, projects, and the development of the relocation as we move forward. In addition, we will be asking council to consider four things, and one of which Mr. Lux indicated. Closure resolution to allow the HRRJ authority to dissolve after two years and to sell the property to the city of Portsmouth. Number two, endorsed applications to the Commonwealth agencies necessary to use staff and receive reimbursements of the jail facility. Three, amend the FY 2024 capital program to allow and pay for acquisition of the regional jail property. And four, enable staff to sell bonds to cover the purchase and initial improvements for the use of the regional jail property. And I'll yield back to you. And I'll yield back to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. And Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lux, for the presentation. Very comprehensive, and we like what we see. We had thought, I guess the figures that we thought were around $30 million for the purchase of the jail, so the $45 million is that extra cushion to take care of some of the renovations that may be needed for that facility.
Yes, indeed, Vice Mayor. We've understood that to be some dollars to make some of those improvements that have been identified, maybe as you move in this facility, make sure we secure that all at once so you can kind of transition immediately into that. At least that's what we've understood.
And then, last question, I guess our borrowing potential or possibility, this doesn't cap us to a point where, I mean, I know you all know, but just to know where we would be for our borrowing potential.
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. It does not cap you. This is not, you know, sort of the end of the CIP as we know it. I think what we'd like to do, as you look at those ratios in the last couple pages, you continue to see capacity relative to the various policies. So, that tells us that there is additional capacity to take on other projects. City council has identified. We'd want to take a closer look at that before we give you a specific number and things of that variety, but definitely do have capacity over and above that roughly $45 million to start with.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Lux, thank you for the presentation. On page 16, just want to make sure on that June 25th projected date of closing, once that takes place, the interest rate that you were speaking of, that's locked in, that doesn't change for that particular bond?
That's correct. It's actually even set earlier than that. It'll be set on June 11th. Again, a little preliminary schedule, but that interest rate would be set and locked in on June 11th. And so, for roughly a 20-year time period, you know what that rate was. And the other side of it is, to the extent those dollars aren't needed immediately, the roughly $45 million, some portions certainly will go to make the payment for the regional jail, but to the extent the balance of that is spent down over time, you'll have those dollars in a specific state program, and that'll also be earning interest to the city's benefit, beginning at closing, which we've penciled in for the moment at June 25th.
Okay. And then, the second question on page five, as we continue to be good stewards, we always want to keep that credit rating high. So, the key credit rating drivers that you have listed, I'm sorry, on page six, on page six, you mentioned factors that could lead to a downgrade. So, what we see here before is these three factors. They are the, those are your major factors that the rating companies would look at that could impact a credit rating score?
That's right. That's right. And this is one of the three rating agencies. So, they're each independent. They all have their own view, but I think these are, from a summary standpoint, these are three good examples of things they would look at as exclude negatives in terms of the overall credit. So, maintaining that strong fund balance level is at the top of the list.
Okay. All right. All right. And those reactions generally occur in what time period? When would you see any type of change in a credit rating?
It depends. I think if we were to go talk to them, they usually would first potentially put you on an outlook, one way or the other, which then is their signal that within a two- to three-year time period, maybe something has changed, if they see something that is moving away from our current credit rating. And so, we'll be going through that. It usually isn't instantaneous, but it can be. It can be if something is severe enough or if they're concerned enough about something, they can take that action quickly again if they see something that is really that concerning.
And those severe issues will probably fall along one of these three?
Yes, those would be the three big. It's not necessarily comprehensive, but those would be probably the three, the three biggest.
Okay. And the last issue, with our vote on unionizing, does that impact any of these three areas?
The financial flexibility side of things, I think, is something that they'll, you'll be relatively unique within Virginia. Certainly, there's other local governments that have voted to do that. They'll want to talk about that and understand how that's going to impact our annual budgetary flexibility. So, they care a lot about how much flexibility do we as a city have to adjust budget year to year? And so, they'll understand how does that impact the ability to make those annual budgetary adjustments? Yeah, and so, to David's point there, what they'll want to see and understand is that we're able to, with unions, with debt service, et cetera, maintain a structurally balanced budget, meaning we've got enough revenues in each and every year to cover our recurring expenditures, and we're not using some of that fund balance to cover some of those fixed costs.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lux. Thank you, Mr. Rose. We appreciate you. That concludes your presentation. And Dr. Patton, ma'am, you have the floor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the city attorney will speak from here.
Madam Attorney, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. We are going to now pivot a bit to talk about the Sugar Hill Task Force. Approaching the podium is Deputy Derek Challenger. You all will recall at the last council meeting, we provided a report back to council, and with council consensus, it was asked that we present on that report back in a work session. So, we're here to do that and answer any questions about what the next steps will be. Mr. Challenger, you may proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I'm doing a recap of the Sugar Hill Task Force, specifically as it relates to the composition of the task force itself. Portsmouth City Code, Session 2-27, states that there should be no standing committees of the city council, but the council can meet in a committee of the whole whenever it deemed desirable to do so. That means that for the purpose of the city Sugar Hill Task Force, the council itself would be the committee. The other option that's available is the mayor, from time to time, may appoint such committees as may be necessary, and that particular committee would report their findings back to the city council in the form of a report. So, there's two different options that are available as it relates to committees. One, a committee of the whole, and the second is a special committee appointed by the mayor. The meaning of the Session 2-27 of the city code, the main point that I want to iterate in this is that there can be no standing committees and that the task force ends upon the completion of the purpose of the task force. Alternatively, the mayor may appoint a special committee, and again, the special committee will report back in a report to city council, the findings of their report and the recommendations. The city attorney's office can represent the task force as the chief legal officer to all boards, commission, and agencies of the city. However, there is no basis of the city to provide private counsel or money to pay for private counsel to citizens. Robus Rules of Order, 12th Edition, defines the committee as a body of one or more persons elected to consider or investigate matters or subjects or to do all these things in combination. There are two different types of committees. There's a standing committee, which is continuing of existence, which is not allowed by city code, and there's a special committee, which goes out of existence as soon as the specified task has been completed. The distinction between special committees and/or committees of the whole, they have less authority to act compared to the city council. The other distinction is they do not have regular meeting times. So, in essence, you call for the initial meeting, and then subsequent meetings will be scheduled for a new date. The Portsmouth City Code, Session 2-28, states that members of boards or commissions shall have a stake in the city, meaning they're property or business owners within the city or shall be employed by the city. The members can be selected by majority vote at the time that the committee is appointed. A chairman should be appointed when the special committee is appointed as well. A special committee can include members who are not members of council. The number of members of a special committee should reflect the purpose for which it is appointed. Where the committee is appointed for deliberation or an investigation, as the case is here, the size of the committee should be larger to reflect all points of view. In a realistic perspective, to me, that means somewhere between five and nine people. All the meetings of a special committee constitute one session. When the special committee has finished its business, a motion is made for the committee to rise, which means to adjourn, and for the chairman or some other member to make a report to the assembly. The secretary takes minutes. This secretary could be the chairperson. The special committee is not governed by any strict rules of parliamentary procedure. It's a more relaxed version that's provided for in Session 50-25 of the Robus Rules of Orders. Members will have the opportunity to present their views and order their meetings or sessions. And the final act of the special committee is to provide city council with its final report, which is stated in Portsmouth City Code, Session 2-27. Members of the commission will have to comply with the Freedom of Information Act and the Conflict of Interest Act. The next steps, a resolution will be required authorizing the task force. That would include naming a chairperson of the task force. It would determine the membership, meaning how many members and how the members are selected, and the rules of procedure. The resolution should also state the purpose of the task force. Any questions? I'll be willing to answer anything that I can.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you. Based on the two options as far as forming the task force or special committee, that would be council's decision?
Correct.
So, there would be a motion for one of these types, and then based on that?
Yeah, that's exactly correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so if there aren't any further questions, we will engage council at the next meeting with some options to move this task force forward, and proceed to next steps.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to the city attorney. Has anything changed on your legal opinion on the authority that this council has as far as appropriating money to anybody that's been aggrieved over the Sugar Hill situation?
No.
And, okay, so that has not changed?
No, sir. None of the legal findings that we've presented to council has changed since the beginning.
Right. And as I recall, Senator Lucas said that if we wanted to change that, that would be something that the General Assembly would have to take up. Is that correct?
That's correct with respect to the initial request of providing an opportunity for land or funds to go back to citizens. The Dillon Rule does not provide that for the locality at this time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Challenger? Seeing none, thank you, sir, for your presentation. Come to the point of our agenda where we have city council liaison reports. Are there any city council liaison reports at this time? Seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in need of a closed session. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor. That's going to be under the public hearing, sir, so that will actually be heard at 7:00. All of those items are public hearing items, and those public hearing items will be heard at the regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, sir. We do have a need for a closed session, so I would ask the Vice Mayor, if you could please read the closed session motion.
Yes. I move to go into a closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A6, for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where, if made public initially, the financial interests of the governmental unit would be adversely affected specifically regarding the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding the Southeastern Public Service Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion read and a second, and I would ask all of my colleagues to please note your vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We are in closed session. We do have a need to come out of closed. So, I would ask that Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, would you please read the certification to come out of closed?
Yes, I will. I hereby move that each council member certify to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We have the motion read and a second. I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our work session for today. We will recess and reconvene at 7:00.